Welcome everyone in attendance and it's summertime, so thank you for being here. I'm glad you're comfortable in here, it's nice and cold. We appreciate your attendance and your support of the school system and our goals as we work to help our status be the best that I could be in this campaign.
Thank you. Approval of agenda as presented. Motion to approve. Second. It's been moving properly second that we approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, ready, not saying. Opposers and ayes have it. So what if we have so much? May 28th, May 28th, 2024, and May 22nd, 2025. Motion to approve. Second. It's been moving properly second that we approve the minutes for May 28th, 2025. All in favor, ready, not saying. Ayes have it and so ordered. Consent item, approval of trip for WS Neal High School Band to attend and perform at Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida on April the 23rd, 2026 through April the 25th, 2026.
So of course we bring this to you early because they're going to have to fundraise to be able to do this. So they ask that you approve permission for them to do so. That way they can do the fundraising that they need to, to plan that trip.
May we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve the trip for WS Neal High School Band to attend and perform at Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida on April the 23rd through April the 25th, 2026. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Action items. Number one, approval of purchase of library furniture for interior elements of AC Moore Primary School in the amount of $26,299.90 paid from the pre-K enhancement grant.
So this will provide us with a library for our AC Moore with those 320 students. You know, we want to give them learning opportunities in that library. We are able to utilize preschool grant, the pre-K grant to be able to purchase that.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we receive the financial report as presented, subject to audit. Second. It's been moving properly second that we receive the financial report as presented, subject to audit. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Consent item, approval of purchase of library furniture for WS Neal High School Band to attend and perform at Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida on April the 23rd, 2026 through April the 25th, 2026.
So of course we bring this to you early because they're going to have to fundraise to be able to do this. So they ask that you approve permission for them to do so. That way they can do the fundraising that they need to, to plan that trip.
May we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moving properly second that we approve the purchase of library furniture from Interior Elements for AC Primary School in the amount of $26,299.90 paid for from pre-K enhancement grant.
So this will provide us with a library for our AC Moore with those 320 students. You know, we want to give them learning opportunities in that library. We are able to utilize preschool grant, the pre-K grant to be able to purchase that.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve the purchase of library furniture from Interior Elements for AC Primary School in the amount of $26,299.90 paid for from pre-K enhancement grant. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Approval of proposed dress code, option A or B. Now, we all have the documents in front of us. We probably received them as well in our email. What we're going to do is ask for a roll call vote. Everyone has had a chance to review these.
So in just as I, my vocabulary is A is what I call the open dress code. Right, it is just don't wear anything indecent, don't show anything that you shouldn't, don't have anything lewd or ugly vulgar language. The option B is what I would call a relaxed dress code where we're focusing on spirit shirts and jeans and any outerwear. But that they also have options to wear black, khaki, navy pants, etc.
Are we ready?
Are you ready, Michelle?
District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
B.
District five.
B.
District six.
B.
District seven.
B.
We have four Bs, three As.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board for your vote. So we have approved the dress code B, item B. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Roll call vote.
Well, that's roll call, I'm sorry. Sorry. Revised summer salary schedule, item number three.
Okay, so Mr. Ford, do you want to go ahead and mention what that change is?
Yes, that change for the revised summer salary was one of the summer pay was missing the date. So it went from 10 days of pay to 11 days of pay out of Title I funds. And then the other one, AC Moore has a grant, a first 10 grant that they received last year and the continuation of this year. Within that grant, they have certain things that they have to do and fulfill and plan and budget and plan events. And they have cycle money set aside for their, but we do not have that in our salary schedule to pay that. So that's what the addition is based on.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve the revised summer schedule. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Item four, approval of dual enrollment for dual credit agreement between Reed State Technical College and Escambia County School.
So we do this agreement with Coastal and with Reed, but this way we can offer our dual enrollment classes to our students at no cost to them. So it's a great partnership to also be able to utilize Reed State for some of the courses that we have with them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve a dual enrollment for dual credit agreement between Reed State Technical College and Escambia County High Schools. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Number five, approval of contract with Family First Educational Services LLC for supplemental vision services paid out of the IDEA funds.
Ms. Barnett, you want to speak on this one, the supplemental vision?
Sure, we do not have a vision impairment teacher to assist with our students with visual impairments. We have found Mr. Isaac who is an O N N specialist and a certified vision impairment teacher that we can contract with. And he will communicate with our teachers with the needs for their individual students. Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve the contract with Family First Schools LLC for supplemental vision services paid for by IDEA funds. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Number six, approval to purchase 100 Chromebooks for WS Neal High School from Aerie Brown, or Aerie Jones Educational Solutions in the amount of $36,939.90 paid out of WS Neal Title I funds.
So this is because of course it's over that $15,000 threshold. This is usually the WS Neal's Title I money to purchase these devices, but it is something we wanted to bring to you.
Motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve the purchase of 100 Chromebooks for WS Neal High School from Aerie Jones Educational Solutions in the amount of $36,939.90 paid out of WS Neal Title I funds. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Number seven, approval of the purchase of accelerated reader for $42,804.90, my own for $61,380.63, NearPod/Flo- vocabulary for $42,170.00 from Renaissance Learning paid out of fiscal year 25 A and T funds.
So these are continuations of programs that we've already had. We've probably had AR, as we, you know, we all know, go and read your book, take your test, probably for 25 years. NearPod and vocabulary, I think this makes maybe year four with that program. It is an instructional tool that we can go online. It's got lessons, it's got, the vocabulary is hip hop, teaching kids vocabulary. So it's very catchy. And then also my own is, you know, our books that we gave our students from birth to eighth grade. You know, it's about 10,000 books that we give into our students online. So these are just continuations.
Okay, may we have a motion?
Make a motion with approve. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we, the approval of purchase of accelerated reader, $42,804.90, my own, $61,380.63, NearPod/Flo- vocabulary for $42,170.00 from Renaissance Learning paid out of fiscal year 25 A and T funds. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Item number eight, approval of contract with Gulf Coast Therapy for physical and occupational therapy services for the 25, 20, 2025, 2026 school year.
So Ms. Barnett can elaborate on this. This one she just got, she received it this morning. And so because we love Ms. Barnett.
Actually, it's afternoon.
This afternoon. It was at like the last minute, but it is for our PT and OT services for Ms. Barnett.
Yes, we are required to provide occupational and physical therapy for the students that need those types of services for however it might benefit them through their ID and 504 services. Gulf Coast Therapy has been a wonderful partner with us for many, many, many years. And this is just the contract for the school year.
And it's around $80 an hour for their services?
It is, they did have to increase by $10 this, this year, which is not a huge increase in what we've been paying. And IDEA will cover.
Anyway, we want to bring it to you because anytime we're contracting with someone to be outside to serve our students, we want to make sure that you're aware of that. Okay.
Now, now these are our special education students. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
Special education students.
Motion to approve.
It's been moving properly second to, for the approval of the Gulf Coast Therapy for physical and occupational therapy services for the 2025, 2026 school year.
So Ms. Barnett can elaborate on this. This one she just got, she received it this morning. And so because we love Ms. Barnett.
Actually, it's afternoon.
This afternoon. It was at like the last minute, but it is for our PT and OT services for Ms. Barnett.
Yes, we are required to provide occupational and physical therapy for the students that need those types of services for however it might benefit them through their ID and 504 services. Gulf Coast Therapy has been a wonderful partner with us for many, many, many years. And this is just the contract for the school year.
And it's around $80 an hour for their services?
It is, they did have to increase by $10 this, this year, which is not a huge increase in what we've been paying. And IDEA will cover.
Anyway, we want to bring it to you because anytime we're contracting with someone to be outside to serve our students, we want to make sure that you're aware of that. Okay.
Now, now these are our special education students. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
Special education students.
Motion to approve.
It's been moving properly second to, for the approval of the Gulf Coast Therapy for physical and occupational therapy services for the 2025, 2026 school year. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Item number nine, approval to accept bid from Booster Building Group LLC for video board at WS Neal High School in the amount of $159,000, Ward Scott Mars Project number 24-009.00.
I have a question. Are we replacing the Pepsi board that's up there or how is that going to work?
No.
Okay.
It'll be off to the side of it.
Yeah, off to the side.
Motion to approve.
May I have?
Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve and accept, or approve to accept the bid from Booster Building Group LLC for video board at WS Neal High School in the amount of $159,000, Ward Scott Mars Project number 24-009-00. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Item number nine, approval to accept bid from Booster Building Group LLC for video board at WS Neal High School in the amount of $159,000, Ward Scott Mars Project number 24-009-00. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Item number eight, approval of contract with Gulf Coast Therapy for physical and occupational therapy services for the 25, 20, 2025, 2026 school year.
So Ms. Barnett can elaborate on this. This one she just got, she received it this morning. And so because we love Ms. Barnett.
Actually, it's afternoon.
This afternoon. It was at like the last minute, but it is for our PT and OT services for Ms. Barnett.
Yes, we are required to provide occupational and physical therapy for the students that need those types of services for however it might benefit them through their ID and 504 services. Gulf Coast Therapy has been a wonderful partner with us for many, many, many years. And this is just the contract for the school year.
And it's around $80 an hour for their services?
It is, they did have to increase by $10 this, this year, which is not a huge increase in what we've been paying. And IDEA will cover.
Anyway, we want to bring it to you because anytime we're contracting with someone to be outside to serve our students, we want to make sure that you're aware of that. Okay.
Now, now these are our special education students. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
Special education students.
Motion to approve.
It's been moving properly second to, for the approval of the Gulf Coast Therapy for physical and occupational therapy services for the 2025, 2026 school year. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Item number nine, approval to accept bid from Booster Building Group LLC for video board at WS Neal High School in the amount of $159,000, Ward Scott Mars Project number 24-009.00.
I have a question. Are we replacing the Pepsi board that's up there or how is that going to work?
No.
Okay.
It'll be off to the side of it.
Yeah, off to the side. Side of the board.
Motion to approve.
May I have?
Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve and accept, or approve to accept the bid from Booster Building Group LLC for video board at WS Neal High School in the amount of $159,000, Ward Scott Mars Project number 24-009-00. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Item number nine, approval to accept bid from Booster Building Group LLC for video board at WS Neal High School in the amount of $159,000, Ward Scott Mars Project number 24-009-00. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
I have a question.
Yes.
We're calling for discussion. By accepting this bid, are we saying that we are paying for this board? Are we buying and installing the board?
Yes. Yes, answer that, yes.
Now, it's my, am I understanding that we will, the board will contribute up to $100,000 for each of the high school for one of these boards if they so express to give life?
Yes. Okay, so Ms. Lucas, be sure that you note that in a minute.
Reflect that in a.
Yes, I want to make sure that that's in the, in the minutes.
In the minute.
And that the Neal High School has raised.
They have raised $75,000.
$75,000 towards that $159.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. May we have a?
We did a motion.
We did a motion. All, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay.
Nay.
Sure.
Let the record shine.
One nay.
One nay. It has been approved with one nay vote to accept the bid from Booster Building Group LLC for video board at WS Neal High School in the amount of $159,000, Ward Scott Mars Project number 24-009-00. Miscellaneous, approval of, of the payment of bills and payroll.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we approve the payment of, for the bills and payroll. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Thank you. Personnel, this is your moment to again reflect on what you've already read.
Is anything you noticed that happened?
There were a couple of positions, there were a couple of retirements, resignations that we did add. Let me get to my sheet, you and I continue with numbers. And then we had, okay, I'm sorry, the resignations, there were a couple added on resignations. And then the, there was one added on number two, on B2, that was added in addition. The, I believe on the employment, there might have been, you may not have seen number 10 on C. And you may not have seen, because that was added, I think, today. And then I believe 25 was added earlier this week, Ms. Lucas. I think that's only two. And then, yeah, and then on employment change, nothing's been added there since Monday, Monday. And then. Yeah. Now, on summer employment, there is a couple of changes there that we had to add to accommodate for working extra time in the summer for our counselors. And also an employee that has to attend five days. So it is a little bit on the summer tab. C12. G, G3, okay, hang on.
G12.
I was going back through, I should have made my.
G3.
G3 is also, yeah, that was the one that we added today, based on a request from Ms. Cooper West.
Is there any like when she adds, you can say she.
We can highlight, we can, we can, we can highlight that when it's been after, you may have seen it.
Yes.
We can do that, for sure. And I apologize, we'll make a note to do that, okay?
Yeah.
Because we do have some last minutes and because we knew we weren't going to meet again for a couple of weeks, we do try to help our principals out. We do try to give them a deadline of last week, but it's, sometimes it's difficult.
Yeah, but we, we.
But we will, we can highlight, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, I, I have had the exact same thought because we come in here with one.
And then you have to look back through everything.
No, well, we don't know that it has happened. And when we do look back, if it's highlighted, it jumps right out at us. Okay, now my.
He's abstaining, he's not abstaining from C12, Mr. Dalton. And Mr.
I'm abstaining from C12.
Thank you so much.
Okay, maybe I have a motion concerning our personnel recommendations with holdouts.
And that's. Second.
It's been moving properly second that we receive our recommendation for personnel with holdouts, C12?
Hold that, no, no, holdouts. We're just.
Just abstain.
Just two are abstaining from C12.
Oh, oh.
One is voting, just holding. I gave it to Ms. Lucas.
Okay.
Okay. So you were C21?
C21.
And C20. Okay, noted.
With those noted?
Yeah.
Attention.
Okay, nay. All in, well, we have a motion. And a second. All, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, ayes have it and so ordered. Thank you. Next one, our.
So can I ask one favor?
Well.
We, we scheduled our next board meeting for July the 15th with a two-hour board training at 1:30 to 3:30, 4:30 regular meeting, okay? That'll be on July the 15th. That's our, we're going to call it a special called meeting. I would like to ask you, if you could look at your calendars, on July the 31st is our day before school starts. I'm going to call that one the regular called meeting. That way Mr. Ford can have his financials ready for you, but it will probably be mostly personnel because that is the day before school starts.
That works.
That will be the last time we get a chance to hire anybody before they are supposed to be in our building. Okay? Would that be okay? And we'll do that 31st, we can do that one at 4:30. I will let you know if we need to do, if y'all want to do a work session, we can do the 3:30 work session. Would that be okay? Just, I'll send it out in your letter, okay? And then we'll do 4:30.
Where does that be?
Would you like to do that in Atmore? And then we could do the tour of AC Moore that day as part of our work session?
Work.
Whoa, 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 I can't keep up with what's going on.
I will send it to you.
But I need still need to write it down.
July the 31st?
Well, let's start with the 15th.
Okay, the 15th, here?
That's here.
Here, we're going to start at 1:30 for a, this is the whole board training.
Whole board training.
Okay, whole board training, 1:30 to 3:30. We will have a meeting right after at 4:30 or whatever.
And okay, and then. And, okay, and then a meeting.
Uh-huh, and then we could even do it at four o'clock, you know, do it a little bit early, okay? So I'm gonna put myself a note there, cause we, that way we just have a little gap between Alicia and the, and the meeting. On the thirty-first is the last Thursday, uh, what day is that, is it in the Thursday? Thirty-first is the Thursday, so we could do that, that, uh, maybe at three-thirty, and we could all meet at AC Moore. Then we could go to our meeting at four-thirty at ACO, okay? That way we could do a little tour.
Workshop three-thirty.
And then the meeting will be four-thirty. I hope that's okay. We can. And if you, right, we could do the, in AC Moore, we'll just keep it at the same place, okay?
Good.
I, that, it doesn't matter, we just have to set it up somewhere.
It'll be somewhere.
Okay, that's fine, we just stay where we are, we'll just do it at AC Moore, and I'll put that in your letter.
Yeah.
And I'll send you plenty of reminders, okay? Cause that'll be a different location, we'll make sure everybody's in the right place.
Let's be it.
Okay, and we'll just do three-thirty and four-thirty.
Yeah, got it now.
Okay, and so now, okay, before you conclude, I would like to, uh, welcome back to Escambia, Mr. Kerry's Let. Our brand new principal, Rachel Patterson, okay, and, uh, many of you remember Mr. Let. Um, I also want to introduce, and some of you have met her before, but Ms. Tori Trina has just been named our accountability supervisor. We have just put a bucket load of things on her plate, um, you know, and she asked me, she said, hey, can I have a checklist for what I'm supposed to be doing? I said, and it will keep growing. I, I told her that, I was like, here, yeah, here, I'll start it. I'm not sure how long it'll get, but it's, it'll start. Um, and I don't know if there's anyone else, but, uh, so our new, um, our new elementary supervisor is not here, but I'll introduce her at the next meeting, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Collier, all minds clear? This meeting is now adjourned.
Okay, good job, good job. And if I had, if I, do I have everybody's form?
Oh, no, but I can.
You got it, Michelle? Michelle?